Or protection.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay. There was also a copy of a letter and a shore protection permit that were sent to Mark Capomansio for the property located at 108. Three nine North Beach or Grand DNR. A letter was also received from Ralph Langenberg, the clerk treasurer for the Sister Bay Liberty Grove Library Commission. And in his letter, Mr. Lev Langenberg announces that he will be retiring in two thousand twenty-two. He also states that he appreciated if his replacement could be hired before the end of December so that he has time to train that person. Um, there was also a letter from Jerry DeShane, the executive director of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities. In that letter, Mr. DeShane indicates that there still is an opportunity for the village to send someone to the last local government one-on-one training session. That session is going to be conducted in person on Friday, September tenth in Waupakka. Um, then we also received a letter this morning from John Fletcher that wasn't included in the packets. And if you don't mind, I'll read that letter. Um, okay, it says, I'm heading up the Sister Bay Historical Society's effort to save the barn. We are a small organization, so we don't have the means to move the barn to our site. I'm told raising may start soon, so we don't have time to mount a fundraiser. Why is it important to save it? First, it's the end of an era in Sister Bay's history. It's the last of the old original resorts. Lambs became helms, hubs, Denor, Liberty Park have all fallen to condo developers. Saving the barn deserves the last piece of that era. Second, the historical society is badly needed, displaying storage of documents and artifacts. The barn would serve as the Sister Bay History Center. It's authentic and fits well with the fifteen other buildings we have saved. And it has such a rich history, starting with Andrew Anderson's, some say his son. Properties in exchange for five hundred acres of property. Thank you, John Fletcher.
Thank you, Janelle. Uh, do we have any? Comments or concerns from the public on a non-agenda item from those zooming in or those here with us tonight? Okay, moving along to what is item number two on our business items discussing discussion regarding the passage of resolution four, six, five, oh, eight, one, seven, two, zero, two, one. That recognizes former trustee Village President Dave Le now for her service to the community. Consider a motion for action as appropriate.
Janelle, do you want to read that resolution?
I'd like to make a motion to approve that resolution.
We can do that.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried unanimously.
Okay.
Item number three, discussion regarding passage of resolution four, six, six, zero, eight, one, seven, two, zero, two, one, that recognizes Fire Chief Chris Heck for his service to the community. Consider a motion for action as appropriate. I will motion that we approve. As written.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed.
Aye.
Motion unanimously. Item number four, presentation and discussion regarding the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-six capital improvement plan for the village of Sister Bay. Uh, in pre-meeting discussion clarified with Tasha and our um. Partners from Baird present tonight that they would like to get through their entire presentation, at which point afterwards. The floor will be opened up to each trustee with any questions we have at that point. With the one uh, pre uh, note that while it does say uh, adopted September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one on the cover of the binder we received. We are to consider this a draft and our initial look at the contents of the binder. And for us to keep that in mind when it comes time for our commentary later. So gentlemen, thank you very much. And Tasha, uh, if you're going to be involved at all, thank you in advance as well. And we look forward to what you're going to inform us about.
Yeah, Brian, take it away.
Well, good evening, everybody. Brian Lico from Baird. Um, I've been working with both Tasha and the departments since, I believe, about the start of this process in twenty nineteen. I think what Tasha's work, I believe, is correct. Obviously, with the COVID that we run into, uh, took us about a year and a half to finally finish the process. Uh, but the um, document that we have in front of you, the full document, um. Basically, this is an essential management tool for Sister Bay to utilize in planning. Capital improvements over a multiple-year timeframe. Uh, it details listings of capital expenditures and programs and projects. And there also is a section of beyond five years that the departments and the administration have been working on in conjunction with us. Put that all together into one document. This document, we feel, will be probably the beginning now of your annual budget process. This document will be updated annually for the next five years, for next year will be twenty-three to twenty-seven, and so on each year after that. Everything that would be placed here by your departments will be something that we will certainly have consideration in your next budget cycle. About twenty-two items every year. That's why there's section five in the document that shows all the individual items that the departments have put through that they like to consider. They should have capital expenditures for two thousand twenty-two, which is in a separate section five of the document. Um, so this will be part of your annual, basically, this will be the beginning of your annual budget process. This will be done, the timeframe that uh, the normal years timeframe of, let's say, a pandemic going into play is um. We would generally start the discussion on this updating of the five-year creation of this plan, which is usually done in, let's say, February, March of the fiscal year. And that's where you meet with all the departments, administration, Volontashion itself, and that way your departments kind of gave them a. Guidelines as to what should be placed into the document. We came up with some standard templates for the departments to use, which are in the documents, and we'll reference those. Uh, where they put their justifications and budget impacts and why the item is being placed in the budget. And the need for it, and there is priority rankings uh, in each of the items um, for inclusion in the plan. So it's, it's a pretty comprehensive and I think a detailed plan that will be very beneficial to the village in their long-range planning for capital items. There is a uh, capitalization threshold policy that the village, I think, have just adopted this year.
Oh, here's the presentation.
Yeah.
For everyone. Yes, the capitalization um, policy from the document in May.
And section three of the plan is the capitalization policy. Basically, what the policy is that the departments and your administration are following is what goes into plan is the capitalization item is an individual item of five thousand dollars a year. That's the capitalization threshold that the village is going to be using, and that's standard uh, government help. Uh, entities right now, about like five thousand, somewhere at ten, but the village of this size, five thousand, I think is very adequate. Um, so we tried to use that as the threshold for items that would, and it needs to be an individual item. If you have a group of items, let's say, um, ten tables, that may come to uh, ten thousand dollars. Well, individually, that item is two thousand dollars, that would not be part of the plan, that would be part of your operational budget, component of the budget process. So this would be items of five thousand dollars or more. We met then with the departments to give them that information and background. Um, we also went out to every department and areas in the village and kind of inventory each of the capital items that the village currently had. And then what was being planned, um, and met with the departments for them to put together a listing, and then be actually compiled a listing that has all your capital items. And that's going to be something very useful in the future for the village. And then we also had them do rankings and priorities of the different uh, programs and expenditures, and they've done that with each of the items listed in the plan. In the, uh, Tasha, that do you think we should cover before we get that into the actual document?
Um, I will say that the staff has put in a lot of time and thought and discussion um, into this process. We had a meeting um, earlier this summer, and we're able to get all of our department heads together to go through the items together. So we can bounce ideas off each other, so that we could discuss together and that ideas improve. I mean, um, you know, utility is working with the marina to make something happen. And I think it has really helped the department heads to come together as a group um, for a really beneficial purpose for the village. I think um, in the end, this will be genuinely used, helpful, um, a huge benefit to the village.
Yeah.
It's, it's a major benefit also to, for example, Baird, uh, when we look at your long-term capital finance needs and we put together a bonding proposal. Uh, we look at what the possible needs in the future are for bonding from the, from the village standpoint. And that helps us structure the financing to a point where we want to keep your debt service levy as flat as possible. So we don't have peaks and valleys. Um, and one year you're going to leave a little way up, next year you're going to go down, we're going to try to have a level debt service. A plan like this is very beneficial to Baird to plan um, future debt financings for the village. Also, it's a major factor in your credit rating agency that we deal with standard insurers. They always ask for something like this. Uh, that is a very beneficial and helps in achieving your higher bond rating, that you have a very good bond rating. And keeps your interest rates, obviously, at as low as you possibly can have for the village. So a lot of the factors would have in the plan like this in place though. It's going to be very similar to your annual budget, to your audits that you have on an annual basis. This will be another annual document that you will be able to use and uh, and have for a long-term capital financing needs. So um, as Tasha mentioned, we did have a lot of meetings with uh, your staff and your department heads. I think they went very well. I think we saw the process when we first started out with maybe a little. Uh, because we weren't quite certain what this was going to entail, but boy, once we got into it, they all bought into it right away. And it was uh, it was very, very fruitful, and it's very great to see that they did have that uh, eagerness to do it. And they did a fantastic job of putting this together.
Yeah, and I just want to add something. Sorry to cut you off, Brian, but this was, this couldn't have come at a better time, too. We have new department heads that obviously had to learn and gather intel on their parts of the organization. Um, Dan Klansky being here being an excellent example. Um, now, you know, looking into two different departments, um, it gave them an opportunity to take inventory and stock of what we have and what's existing. And it, from a timing standpoint, that was perfect. It helped them mold into the organization a lot faster.
So in the actual documents of the first three sections, um. They're great, I'm not going to go through them line by line, but it tells you about the introduction kind of pieces that we may have touched on, benefits, why is, why do you want to receive? And then the actual process itself that Tasha has touched on. Um, where we are right now, we have just finished up the document now, and uh, now it's a probably more for your, for initial look at. And then as, as Rob mentioned, you're looking at it then even in December, or September, for possible adoption. And uh, then we can sort of, obviously, change that page to whatever that meeting is. And uh, this was, say, this would be probably your first piece of your annual budget process then. So um, following the adoption of this on an annual basis, you'll have that included in your budget for consideration for capital items. And uh, then it'll be up to the uh, board to determine, as you know, if you're going to keep those items in your annual budget, or if you decide to delay them for future years or not use them at all. Again, this is just a planning document, nothing uh, says that you are going to be doing any of this. But it's what the departments have come through and determined that obviously the needs are what's in here, and we'll see those be inserted. So um, section four then, well, section three is, is just a basic summary information from all the different departments, putting everything together in one piece.
Sure.
And then we go through the individual department by department sections.
So you'll see on your um, your sheet where we have summary by funds um, for the capital improvement plan. It'll be separated out by funding sources.
Could, could you quote the page number when you refer to something in the binder, please?
Hey, Mark.
Do you want to tap your page in the book or?
The book we're all looking at, the binder.
Hey, Mark, can you talk into the mic, too, just to help?
Page fifteen.
Thank you.
Section three. Capital three.
Uh, good evening, board. Mark Yatchek, RW Baird. Um, we're looking at page fifteen currently, uh, Village of Sister Bay, CIP, summary of funds. As you can see, it's a broken out. Uh, we have funding sources and uses by category. Um, we can also then move over to our page sixteen, which kind of gives um, the viewer where the funding sources are coming from. So we can see other sources, um, the area grant, the area tax, and what we're most concerned about here is uh, bond proceeds. So when we're looking at this capital plan through two thousand twenty-six, we can see the total sources at the bottom seen in a pink trend line through the bar graphs itself. Now, mind you that the full bars do represent a hundred percent of what you will be using in that particular year. So if you look at two thousand twenty-two, you're only using about nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars of total by funding source. And you'll see your spike up to five point eight million, so that will be the amount of sources of revenue that you'll be using. And that will then taper off per year by the type of source and most likely the plan and the projects corresponding to it. Um, and we then move on to page seventeen.
The other, the other source revenue, you may wonder, what is that? Uh, and that is your utilities revenue sources, your water, or your wastewater, uh, collections. When you go into those individual sections, you can see that all of the revenue sources are listed as other ones, because it's utility, and it's kind of second-type revenue. That's what other sources is referring to there.
So then if we move to page seventeen, kind of a similar breakout, illustrates in a little uh, more context here. So um, obviously, the biggest portion and, you know, the, the majority of this document focuses around bond proceeds. So the total funding by source, we're seeing a major part of this as your bond proceeds as uh, approximately six point three million dollars. Um, broken out again is your grants, your general fund lobby, uh, and other sources, as Brian said, will be uh, spread throughout areas. Um, moving to page eighteen, um, similar to the prior page sixteen, which then breaks everything out into your uses by category. So we can also see at the bottom, the total amount of which areas will be receiving their capital improvement funding. And you can use the correlation between the, the prior charts to see where you, your funding will be going. So uses by category, the trend line then follows um, the amounts that you'll be using in those areas. Um, again, on page nineteen, kind of just another, another breakout of the same uh, type of chart. I'm just kind of giving it a different context. It does look like you'll be using a lot of your um, capital in general government. Um, as well as other significant areas in, I believe, the ice rink with one point five, uh, one point six in. To the parks. So just kind of general breakouts, kind of a nice vigilance if um, you know, you're looking at graphs and trying to paint a picture, a more broad picture of. Where, where these funds are going to, what they're funding, and how can we see it in a broader picture?
And as we were developing this with, with the assistance of Tasha and all the departments, we came down with ten categories, and that's what you're seeing if you're looking at page nineteen, that clinical district, which is a category. We can see the ten sections that we have filled out in the capital improvement plan. There's general government, the administration, all the way up to collections on top there. So we have individual sections for reflections, for wastewater, water, the ice rink, and library, arena, students' parks, fire, and general government administration. So then, starting on section four of the document, we have the individual department summary categories. And then a program and justification sheet for each of the program and categories that are listed. So if we go to page twenty-one of the document, this is the general government and administration section. Let's see that. Okay, so on this one, you can see, this is the standard template that's used throughout the document. So all the departments are using these, basically, in page twenty-one and twenty-two, they were using the same documents to put in their specific areas. So the documents would have a program or justification, description and justification page for every specific program or project that is listed in the document. On page twenty-two, you can see for the general administration area, the first one is what's called a land acquisition reserve. And then it has a description as to what it's for, residential land reserve, and then a justification as to why this is being considered. And then at the bottom part of the set, your charts show the expenditures and the funding sources for that particular item, and what year their plan. Of course, here, this is our financial budget, twenty-five thousand dollars per year. And right now, there's no land acquisition plans in the future. So going over to then on page twenty-one, the first line item on the land acquisition, on the program and project, you see the land acquisition reserve lists. Listed, and of course, there's no dollar amounts being considered, expenditures for each of the next five years. But there is going to be a reserve set aside of twenty-five thousand dollars through the capital projects, levy. Any questions? That's kind of how this works throughout the whole document, but using this as an example, I have a question.
Are we deviating from what we initially said, that you were going to make your full presentation, and then we were going to ask questions?
I believe I was just going to interrupt Brian, or um, kind of, you concluded it nicely. This is kind of where we would like to have some interaction with the trustees. I think we've concluded the general presentation. Now we'd like to go through these items a little bit and take your questions and answer what we can and. Um, make any changes as needed.
Maybe what I'll do, Rob, why don't I go through like the general government section?
Uh, if, if you, if you, to Tasha's point, if she wants us to start asking some questions now, I find that to be totally appropriate. Okay, I, I would like to just start going back to page four of the binder. My, and let me make one pre-question clarification. If I heard correctly, you mentioned that what's intended to be here, that we look at, are items costing five thousand dollars or more a piece. You referenced an example of if there were ten tables costing a thousand dollars each, we wouldn't list those. Yet, the binder is full of items costing less than five thousand dollars each. We've got water hydrants for three thousand dollars each, not going up to four thousand dollars each until two thousand twenty-five. We've got seventy-five fire department radios, not anywhere near five thousand dollars each in here. We've got a gear washer less than twenty-seven hundred dollars in here. We've got an unspecified number of computers, laptops, and, and whatnot, uh, that seems to be less than five thousand dollars a piece.
Okay, so I can answer some of those.
Tasha, we, we did talk, we did talk about that, though, so.
Okay, anything with the um, the fire department? What we did was take their capital plan as it is, and put it that into this document. So our portion might be less than five thousand dollars. And in some cases, when you're talking radios or something like that, that's part of their capital plan. And they didn't want to mess with their capital plan, but I wanted to include it because it comes out of our capital funding. So it would make sense that those two would mirror each other. Um, that would apply to the radios, that would apply to the gear washer as well. Our portion is less than five thousand dollars, but we included it anyway.
Okay.
Um, same thing when you get to the library, library and the e-track units. That's their capital plan. I, I don't want to exclude it because it mirrors what is in their budget.
All right, so for the computers that are ours.
When it comes to IT, a lot of that is capitalized together. So although an individual computer is it, you capitalize those items together, so as a group. Like, we don't capitalize an individual module of software, but we will capitalize all of the software together. Um, that's just, so it made sense to include IT as a group. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, yeah. And uh, before I turn it over to Pat and Chad for a chance to ask some questions before I, I ask more, just one more right now. When, on page sixteen, the funding that you noted in the various means of funding, was there any other funding opportunities considered? Or is, was it the position of the people working on this at the time that the only ways possible that funding would ever be attained are what you list on that chart? So in, in instance, for an instance, would the, the potent, especially considering your opening introduction statement that Sister Bay is faced with increasing expenditures and limitations on revenues. Was there any consideration to how the limited revenue spectrum we have could be expanded so that indeed there was more funding coming? Than just what's listed in those categories?
I think the grants, one of the areas was grants. That's in there as a separate line that we had that open and open.
For instance, we, and, and maybe this is, maybe, maybe I just need from Tasha a little more clarification on, on how we account for certain financial aims. But we have several projects in the village with plots of land we own that, you know, we may, that we may be considering putting up for sale and whatnot. To me, when I look at a capital improvement plan that tells me, we got an issue here, there's a limitation on revenues. I'm surprised I don't see on a, here's the spectrum of funding page, here's what we estimate could be possible from selling plots of land in this area, or whatnot.
I, I, I agree with your, where you're coming from, Rob, but I think that's our job, right? That's not their job. They don't, they don't know what we might want unload, what we don't want, what we're going to buy. They're not.
Well, how do they know what kind of grants we're applying for?
I, I'm just saying that when it comes to things of, we may sell land one day, it's really hard to put in a planning. That's, that's all.
Right, so.
It's just hard to put in a planning.
Right, so when we're looking at, for instance, the administration building, we realize that we're not going to probably keep the other administration building, but we might. We, that's not honestly been discussed in detail yet by the board. So we did our best, and this is again a planning document, this isn't written in stone. So there's no, nothing that says in two thousand twenty-three, we are going to get four point nine million dollars of bond proceeds. That may be completely off base. Um, maybe we can get grant funds for it, maybe um, you know, tax revenues change. You know, there, there's all different kinds of options out there. Um, but what we did for the purposes of planning was do our best and our best estimate of where the funds will come from.
Thank you, Tasha. Chad, Pat, questions?
Only question I have, and, and this I know you probably don't know a lot about, the grant number does, does seem really thin. Is it, is that the nature of the world out there for us to get grants for things? Or is it, I know it's really hard to pretend as to what you're going to do and what grants are out there, so I, I'm not trying to visualize all. But I just, to me, with all the funding, it just looks really thin.
Right, and I think the goal of staff would always be to increase funding with, with grants. But to look five years down the road and, you know, assume that a grant will be available to purchase something is kind of tough.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I think that's, that's why I think on, you know, like marina projects, where you're seeing a little bit more grant money. Because we have a consistent relationship with the DNR, we are pretty aware of what they will give grant money for and what they won't. Um, and I think so we have a better idea there. But there are other grants out there for road projects, for, you know, like pathway, you know, white lines for all of that kind of stuff, and.
But it takes us to make the decisions.
Exactly.
Yes.
We need to make the plan first before you guys know what.
Right.
Yeah, it's absolutely a goal to, to receive grant funding. It's hard, yeah, it's just hard to predict in a plan.
I know, and I know how hard it is, just by my previous explanation.
Yeah.
I just was thinking of a historical basis on our spending. You know, are, are we getting less than a percentage of it in grants? It just seemed a little small.
Yeah, we honestly, I mean, it's, it's been a while since, to be, other than Pebble Beach, it's been a while since we had a significant grant. I think it was, you know, probably the marinas, with the road projects. Um, I mean, excluding. I mean, excluding Marina from my conversation, that's a different thing. But our grants have been a little small.
And then my only other capital question was, and again, I know this is more of a boards, this is more for where we have to start making decisions about where we're gonna drive things. We're not quite there yet, but we're getting there. But did you give any thought to parks being, when the governmental, is that included? Is, is, you know, I understand what you mean, the administration building, that we all do. But was that, was in that number, was that part of thinking parks is gonna be all part of it? Was it, what, what did you guys dream, not dream out necessarily, but what did you guys think in that, in that element?
I can, I can take that away. What we did was we used the vision that we've already started talking about and, and took what the committees have already decided on their wish list, what's most important. We started from there. And those top two things being a new administration building and a new parks building. So those were, those are the two general items there along with some other small things to, you know, anticipate it. We know that's coming in at a lower estimate.
Yeah.
But that's where we started.
I just wanted to know what.
So the five, the five million represents two buildings?
Well, one, the buying building.
Yeah. Okay, for.
For two suits.
To replace the parks building? And the administration building, okay? Chad, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I figured the administration building would be something that would excel for everybody, so.
Well, we know, I mean, building costs, you know, and I just want to know how much was coming in there. Obviously, there are opportunities for us to, to Rob's point, sell property, do that, or.
Right, and, you know, five and a half million, and I reference five and a half because that's with the post office within that, right? Project. Five and a half million dollars is where we landed after talking to other communities who have built recently. What they have, you know, what we need, all that kind of stuff, so. We gave it our best shot, but they'll actually bring out, getting a study done.
I'd say one point two and a half.
Right.
Let's go with Pat's questions next, and then we'll turn it over to giving our Zoom members Denise and Nate and Vivian a chance to ask any questions. Pat?
Well, I'm glad we're talking about this. I really appreciate your big kind of effort out to say a lot of what into this, it's great, superstar. I am a little concerned that the committees and this board didn't have any input. Like it says on page four, you know, data was gonna be compiled to Tasha. I'm not interested in timelines, but in the sense of, to me, this is a really expensive, nice product. And to me, it's a finished product. To me, this is still in very early stages. I think it's awesome to get all this data, but I think just like it said on page four, where we should be at this point is, black and white pieces of papers at committee levels. We are a committee-heavy organization. We rely on our committee members who have expertise of those committees. They have the knowledge of what do we need, what do you recommend, do you support this, do we modify this? One example would be the post office. Unless somebody has talked to the post office and they have done a one-eighty, we talked about this three, four, five years ago, and they said, if you move us, you will become a rural route and your, your window is gonna go to Fish Street. And we said, whoa, we don't want to lose the window, we're, we're not gonna do that. So who talked to who at the post office and they're on board with that.
We do have a federal relationship with post office now. I know as far as their manager, he claims to think in discussions I've had with them that things can be done that way. You know, obviously, it's not a slam dunk, but it's something, you know, to consider into their point. None of this is, this isn't a.
Correct this.
Okay, my point is, we're a committee-heavy organization. The committees, it says the committees, it went through all the committee reports in May, June, July, nobody has seen any of this. To me, we're putting down a bunch of numbers and things, and the committees are what drive discussions and decisions. This data helps to drive those discussions, but that's where we should be at a point. They should be, take this data, go to the appropriate committees or their body. Does this make sense? Should be more, should be less, should there be things that weren't thought of that we should be throwing up to the board, you know? I don't know. I mean, I just feel like there's things in here that warrant discussion before I feel good about this being earmarked as our plan. Me, I haven't had any input. I should have input, other than tonight and we're approved.
Let me just get a clarifier on your point there, Pat. Chad, what you just expressed, was that as a committee member, something that Tasha or Beau came to you on? And then you conveyed it to them and that led to the post office thing being in here? Or are you just commenting now on your perception?
There's also a ton of shit with you and committee meetings that goes nowhere when we talk about things. And at some point, staff just gets bored with that and they did something, they're doing something. They're supposed to do something, and then we can tweak it, we can work with it. We, we, we don't have to sit here and say, yep, we're doing all this. We have a long way to go, but they have a plan, right? We can, we can sit here and toil and talk and, you know, whatever, but they have the plan and then.
I'm not referring that they were.
And it's not anything we're bound to.
I understand. At the same token, though, okay, you can appreciate when you're in Marina. If we go back five to seven years in Marina, we took large stabs at what might have been the cost to some larger projects. For instance, ADAC. We hit on there, million and a half to two and a half million dollars on ADAC between shore up the break wall and get floating here, okay? After thinking about it and looking at things and whatever else, my car's gonna come in and that's probably gonna be another eighty or a hundred thousand. But I'm pretty sure we're gonna be under a half a million dollars to do what they have intended on a million and a half to, okay? So to me, it would, if, if it makes sense, and it does, to talk about these things. But let's get a little more supportive documentation and discussion at the committee level that that makes sense.
Yeah, and I think that's probably our next step to do that, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying, we've got a, what to me looks like a finished product, and we should be at passing data to the committees to then go and find something that's a finished product.
Okay, so I think that there's a little bit of concern that staff was, I guess I'm getting concerned that staff was jumping the gun here with this binder looking too nice, okay? So with this plan, like, let's walk it through. This was not intended to be approved tonight. It was intended to be presented, given to you ahead of time so that we could take questions and we could answer, we could all have discussion. And I think that's what's going on, right? Then it wasn't intended to come back until September. And in the meantime, with the budget process, we would look at the twenty-twenty-two numbers, put that into budget. Then that's the utility section that's gonna go through their set theirs before the next budget, before the next meeting. And parks is gonna go through theirs before the next meeting, and Marina's gonna go through theirs before the next meeting. And those are, you know, the base components that make up this plan. So I think that the committees are still gonna get a stab at it. It's just, you know, I think, this is a planning document, that's all it is. And so if the four hundred and twenty thousand dollars doesn't turn out to be the way that it is, well, that's okay. So we just take some pages out of here and replace them with the accurate pages. We just update it.
Yeah, and this is a living, breathing document, that's important to know.
Point Pat about the Marina, which is great, how much less it costs. But that was, you had to have a plan, right? You had to have some numbers still in there. And then as you spent, we spent, you spent a ton of time delving into this and were able to figure out all the ways and really make it way more costly factor. We still get to do all that, right? This is just where we're starting.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
Part of that, though, what we did was scared the Marina committee into the point of having a couple of large increases with the anticipation that this is what our capital expenditure was gonna be in the foreseeable future, okay? What I don't want to happen is put this thing somewhere that I see this and go, oh, the board's approved a five billion dollar spend on administration building. Time out, no, we have not. So, yeah, it, when it looks so naive, to me, it looks like finished product. We're not there. This thing should scream draft all over the front of it, or a working dock.
Get over that, it looks nuts.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I don't want it distributed to anybody and anybody go, well, why didn't we do this? How come we're doing that?
Right, but it's a planning document.
Then it should have said that on the cover and not say adopt.
It's capital improvement plan.
Right.
This is the point, I get what you're saying.
Why do we not follow your document in there when it says it will go to the committees for review? And then it'll come back. I mean, to me, that's what you'd get after that, if we didn't go to committee. I mean, we're gonna go to them now, I guess, and that's fine. I'm just saying, if that's what we do, that's fine. As long as nobody is thinking that this is in any way, shape or form an approved or recommended document at this point.
It's presentation and discussion regarding the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-six capital plan for the villages and that's what we'll do. All right, it's not overthinking. Okay, it does look bad, so I agree, my problems are a lot worse.
To our trustees zooming in, are there any questions, Nate, Denise or Vivian?
Please, why don't you go first?
Okay, I, I already went over some of my questions in discussion with Tasha earlier today. Had a much longer conversation. Two things that I would like to point out, if this is, that needs to be corrected. On page four, there's a typo in the first sentence that says toll instead of tool. And then I have a question on page eighty. Is page eighty-one wastewater treatment plant furnace for seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars the same as page eighty-one wastewater treatment plant furnace, seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars?
In other words, is eighty-one a replication of page eighty?
Correct.
Right. So it sounds like it's just one furnace and that should be a note made that page eighty-one disappears and it's just covered on page eighty.
So I'm, I'm a little curious too, and this is all fine and I'm not, I don't need to be hypothetical, but we, we spent a huge amount of time, money and effort to come up with what we were told was planned. Wastewater treatment plants for probably twenty years, and we're not even done with that. And we've got a laundry list of we need this, 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 and this, in the same building that they're working on right now. Are these things that were missed? Are they due? Are they, just curious. And now, I mean, maybe we gotta do manager, and again, please don't take offense, it's not my idea. I'm just wondering, you know, doesn't it seem odd that we're not even done with the project? And it's like, we need a furnace. Wouldn't that be something if we're expanding the building and putting a new roof on it that we booked at the furnace?
Well, that's good.
Still, you know, it's got a ten-year life and we're eight years in and we're spending five million dollars. Throw the goddamn ten thousand dollars bill in on the five billion dollar project so we don't have to come back. I got a bunch of people jumping on my ass with these increases, the rates, and we're gonna come back and say, well, we need this, 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 this. The rates are gonna go up again, not like they did before. And, and I'm with you, you needed it, you shouldn't do it, I supported the project, that's not my point. I would just like to look pretty buttoned up that we're not coming back in a very short amount of time saying we need things that to me should have been part of a very detailed, well-thought-out and engineered project, that's all.
Nate, you had some questions?
Yeah, I, I guess I recall the meeting back at Birchwood Lodge, the last time we talked about a capital improvements meeting. Or I think that, I know Pat and Scott were there, I think you were there Denise, maybe?
Yes.
And I also recall, of course, my, my snowmaking machine, which never came to be, still just planned that, Tasha, but I understand. And I guess, not so much the snowmaking machine, but there was obviously some board input as this capital improvements plan came together, because I am quite certain that staff did not dream that up on their own for, for the, the great Lino Hill out at the sports complex. And I, I also agree that this is way too polished a product. I don't, I don't like paper at all. I don't want to get handed anything in paper, much less a draft report that is, is so, so polished. This should be an electronic document, even in the finished copy, except for Denise. We can, we can print one out for her, and we can have it golden embossed and all that for her. But I, I don't think that that was a great thing to do there. But at the same point, all of the work that went into this document had to happen. I absolutely know that, and it was, staff had to start somewhere. I guess I just wish there would have been, and maybe this is just a rushed process because we haven't been going through this. As I know Tasha's talked about doing this for years, getting back to this. I think that we could have started the process a little bit sooner and had a little bit more input on the front end of it, because I, do we have to pass this in September? I mean, September's only one, one meeting away, too, it's not that, that distant.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to look at twenty-twenty-two, that makes a lot of sense, but I agree. At this, the committee should have time to get this stuff, talk about it, and whether it's September or not, I don't know, I don't want to.
Let's make, let's just make sure Vivian doesn't have any, Vivian, did you have any questions, Vivian?
I'm just kind of in absorption mode here, just take.
And Nate, did you, was that your final question, Nate?
Yeah, I just, just that I, I recall us having like worksheets that we did ahead of time.
Right. I, I have some more questions, but I'll let Chad and Pat weigh in one more time.
I was just gonna say, as far as the plan goes, like, it's a plan, right? You have a plan, and yes, for the budget process, twenty-twenty-two is gonna be more delicate this fall. We're not doing the budget in twenty-three or twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-six. You know, I don't, I know it's so worrisome that if this gets out there that this is what we're doing, what staff is doing, what they should be doing, this should be planned for the future. And then, and then we get this document and then we start to figure out what we need for the future. We need to have, we, we had nothing, we had nothing to start with. We talked all the time, we were having this, so great that we're having this discussion. Yep. And we need this, it's just a plan, just gotta wrap our minds around, we have a board on anything? We haven't approved anything? Even if we say we're gonna adopt this, it still means shit, right? It's a plan, just a plan.
As, as you can appreciate, though, okay, sometimes, like, the idea of building a five billion dollar structure in twenty-twenty-three to me, capital building on brand-new land, we probably haven't done soil tests, utility studies, wherever else. That's probably a twenty-four month project, we should have been talking about that already, to me, if we're thinking that's gonna be twenty-twenty-three. And I don't want to rush something like that. We haven't even gotten back the information from the committees on what they think might be good there or not good there. There's so much discussion to me that needs to be had to put, even put the idea of that large of a structure in twenty-twenty-three, it seems way premature to say we would like to have something like that? Sure, okay. But I just want to make sure, because we get into some of this utility stuff, and then there were grants applied for this and that. And it was, now we've gotta make these decisions because we're on this timeline and whatever else. I just don't want to rush us on large capital expenditures. And we get told that we've got to be careful on debt and we have limited sourcing, revenue sourcing. And we're talking about millions and millions of dollars within the next twenty-four months, where I thought the projection had us up to like twenty-thirty or twenty-thirty-two before debt kind of really got much more manageable. So that's just me.
I agree, we need to talk about debt service.
Individual committees, and then it needs to wrap up through finance, talk about, okay, can we do this? How would we do that, whatever else? And then you get to.
And those are all the things that happen after you just have a plan. All right, those are all the things that we gotta do.
So.
Staff has not ignored those concerns. Okay, we, we have, we have worked with there to model some debt options for us. We've looked at how much that will be on the levy. You know, staff, twenty-twenty-three may be a little aggressive, so then maybe it's twenty-twenty-four. But that's where we're coming to you guys and saying, this is the recommendation, financially, we can do this. Staff would start working on it absolutely in twenty-twenty-two and put some effort into it to make it happen in twenty-twenty-three. But if you guys feel like we are not ready and that is not something we want on the LUCI property right now, or we don't know, okay, from staff's perspective, this was, and this is immediate need. We are struggling with some things in the administration building, we're all the space. Our IT is kind of maxed, you know, we are challenged. We're challenged parking, we're challenged with, you know, logistics, with working with our other department head. So from staff's perspective, putting that administration building out there is probably one of the number one priorities. And of course, because it's the biggest item, it's gonna draw a ton of attention to the staff. And that's okay. But we have lacked a lot of strategic direction for years. I mean, Nate brought up the point of, last time we did CIP planning was over at Birchwood Lodge. And I can confidently say that was twenty sixteen or seventeen. That was the last time we really, really talked as a group about CIP planning for more than one. Talked as a group about CIP planning for more than one, one budget cycle. Um, so that's why we're doing this. We need to have those discussions. We need to drive that. Probably needs to go back to finance to say, okay, look at twenty twenty three and let's start really talking about it. Are these things feasible? Coming back to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, a lot of these items are really routine replacement type things that have been on our list for years. So the fact that they didn't come through the capital plan or the most recent capital expense. That was really a lot for major, major equipment, major facility upgrades. Still is really small in comparison. Um, so that's why those items probably didn't get updated. A furnace, maybe it should have been updated. But at the time, it seemed like it could be, it would be fine. Um, and some of these things that are in here. Um, you know, Dan has a little bit different outlook than Mike have. Nate wouldn't use it until it literally fell apart. And maybe Dan has a little different outlook that we're using it up and now it's time to replace it before we are in an emergency situation. So it it's just a different outlook.
I would like to say, Tash, that I commend you very much. For your position on the administration building and the dire need to upgrade that. As you know, I share your concerns on that. I am exceedingly uncomfortable. With a five million dollar price tag. On merely two buildings at the Wiltsey property of a new administration building and a new parks building to me. That dollar amount. Even in twenty twenty three would cover. A new functional village hall, village office, parks building and maintenance building. Uh, and may even cover. A duplex for village owned employee housing. So that's my concern there. I think. A five million dollar number looking at. That is a expanding to a thought of a complex and not just two buildings. Makes sense to me. Um, I'm I'm very uncomfortable. Thinking that it's wise to spend seven hundred thousand dollars to remodel the old village hall. I. I'm very uncomfortable with that. Particularly considering where we're at in. Debt and bond, you know, and debt and loans, et cetera. As far as all the stuff on the ice rink in here. I would say. I I I seem to recall the presentation that Miles left us with. That he now will be spearheading. Potential fundraising for. To diverge from. What appears in here to be remodeling of current stuff. It seemed to me he left it with, this is what we would go for to replace everything we have. So I would just say maybe to Pat's point, that would be our focus on following up with Miles.
On that point, what he was looking for us, just like in many other areas, was for some direction. Okay. His suggestion was, let's figure out what we're, what we want to do there and then it's the village's skin in the game. If it's one point five, we'll say, hey, we're gonna raise seven hundred fifty. You guys gotta go raise seven hundred fifty, but we haven't done that yet. So we need to start making direction happen.
Right.
Because again. We're not supposed to just say, oh, this is great. Let's just do it. We gotta start somewhere. I love that we're starting. Unless, and we'll make it better and we'll make. Decisions and we'll decide as a board voting on what we're gonna do. But we have to have a plan.
It's down to direction.
Yeah.
Um, so if we're looking at twenty twenty three and it's all equipment related.
Denise has got her hand up for a few minutes here.
Denise?
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to thank Tasha for her. Exceptional work. I think this conversation is in the weeds and is wasting a ridiculous amount of every's time. This is a proposal. It is a plan. I didn't get hung up on necessarily any of the numbers because. It's a plan. We will work through it. It will go through committee. It will go through finance and until we put it in the budget, it means nothing. Until we levy for it. Secondly, it's kind of a little ridiculous that the presentation is too pretty. That's all I have to say.
I disagree with you Denise. I think that, but it's not a pretty presentation. That's just a matter of. It being a draft like this and spend this much time and effort to polish it that much. Tasha put an enormous amount of effort into this and it is absolutely needed. I can't say that enough that this was absolutely needed. I just said printed as a PDF and sent it to me. That'd have been my preference, but. That's a rather minor amount of what was expended because most of this was staff time and it was so important to do. And I do say thank you, Tasha, and I, I hope that we're talking about this again next year at the CIP meeting next year too.
And I also say thank you to Tasha, but Denise, I have to disagree with you. I'm sorry you feel this has been a waste of your time to listen to people talk. But if you're gonna put a costly presentation in binder form in front of us and it's gonna be. My first opportunity is your replacement to speak on it. I don't think that I should be limited out of concern that I'm wasting anyone's time. My understanding is we serve the village as public servants to discuss what we have to say. Okay, any further commentary from anyone on item number four? Okay, again, Tasha.
I would like to thank all you guys.
Yeah, and I agree. And I started off, yeah, I think, I think it's great. Now we have the respective information to the committees for discussion.
And I, I would say I look forward very much to working with all of you moving forward on this and thank you for your efforts so far.
Can I make one more comment?
Absolutely.
So when this goes to the committees. Instead of, when we talk about budget and capital, instead of talking about the next year ahead, that's it. We actually get to have a discussion about twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We get to have that discussion, whether this is feasible, whether. Um, whether there are other funding options. All of those things will absolutely be discussed. Um, I I really. It concerns me that you think that this is, you know, this is the plan and we're gonna go with it. Staff. Um, will definitely rely on this, but it's not the end at all. So please be assured that this is a tool we will use going forward.
This is to drive conversation and this is a good start. It really is.
Not be frustrated with our limited knowledge of how things work going.
No, I just, I, I think it's important, Tasha, and I understand. We hear you as trustees and we hear you as committee chairs and this is. Actually, an excellent example of what this is meant to do to drive conversation and to stop thinking about one year ahead. But start thinking about the next five to 10 years. That's exactly what this tool is for and. I'm I'm glad we had some trigger points and conversations because this is what drives planning and gets stuff done. It it really is.
Then my, I, my advice that I hope you would consider in the future is if that's the intention. Don't put adopted one month in the future on the cover of it. But I, again, it's excellent and I look forward to working myself personally with everyone as we move forward. Uh, item number five, consideration of an ordinance amending the provisions of the Village of Sister Bay Room Tax Ordinance. Want to turn that over to our administrator?
Yep. So, um, to break this down, I I did a board report for both five and six here. Um, so there's two, uh, two, two things that need to be reviewed and a motion on. Um, that's ordinance number two eighty four for the room tax ordinance. And resolution number four sixty seven, which is the intergovernmental tax agreement. It's considered amendment number three. Um, that gives the Village Board President and the Village Clerk authorization. Um, to sign the intergovernmental room tax agreement. Um, in that background, I did include Josh Van La Schout, the chair's breakdown of what the changes look like. And what that includes. I don't think we need to go down line by line. Um, on what that is, is, uh, all trustees have had this, um, ahead of time. So if anyone has any questions, please go ahead.
Can we motion together on both of these or does it have to be separate motions?
Two separate motions.
So. After I, since the last time we talked about this, I have been called and approached by several people. Who are all vehemently against increasing. They are sick of the additional floor. They are sick of not being able to go to their favorite restaurants because now there's long waits. You don't have the staff to keep the restaurants open seven days a week. They don't have the staff to keep, uh, take out orders available and. You know, the idea of how you slice the pie doesn't matter. Okay? But if you're gonna increase, and you will, it says right on their website. The sales room dollars drive marketing. What is marketing do? Drives more people to door count. You didn't have this. Why, Wall Street Journal ad, okay? While on one hand that's neat, on the other hand, now we're getting attention nationwide, more attention to bring more people. Okay? I've got people who have called and said, what are we doing about the noise ordinance? I'm having to call the police because these renters are coming home at two o'clock at bar time and they're carrying on out on the decks. And they're waking me up and they're kicking me up and I'm having to call the police. You need to do something as a board to shut this down. Okay? We've got issues that, as I mentioned the last time. Are unintended consequences of throwing more money to market more people. We talked about, we don't have workforce housing. We don't have enough workers. Okay? All this is gonna do is exacerbate those kinds of issues. I then took it upon myself to look at the last meeting minutes of the Tourism Bureau. Three people were opposed to this. I reached out and spoke to two today. One after thirteen and a half years on the tourism zone board said this is such a bad deal that it forced her to resign. She said, this is bullying. This is not appropriate and you are not hearing the the true reason for this. I have another one that said. She's in finance with her municipality. She opposes it and she got her municipality to table this for another month so more discussion and information could be had. Okay? I was told, there's no way we could ask for any kind of changes. No way we're gonna get all the municipalities to relook at this. Well, guess what? Now we're all forced to relook at this and make a change. I asked both of the members of the Tourism Bureau what their thought of a sunset clause would be. One said that is a great idea and the other emphatically, the other one said that's a good idea. Okay? I make a motion that this is denied until such time that a sunset clause is added. Motion by W.
Do we have a second? Okay, with no second to the motion, do we have any other commentary or discussion? Or do we have a separate motion from anyone?
Denise has her hand.
Denise?
I have a couple of questions that I would like clarified, please. On page thirty nine of Josh's memorandum. Um, it states in there that Wisconsin state law. Authorizes municipalities to form a tourism zone such as ours and also prohibits municipalities from having different lodging tax rates. And authorizing ordinances if they are in the same zone. If a municipality chooses not to pass the revised ordinance and intergovernmental agreement initially. Initially and later decided to do so, they would rejoin the commission. So the clarification that, um. I'm looking for is, does that mean that they are no longer part of the Tourism Zone Commission? What, what does that, what does that paragraph mean?
My understanding is it means they would no longer be part of the tourism zone and they would no longer share in any of the benefits. Of being a part of it. That they would be.
So they would not charge any room tax then? Correct?
Yeah, I I don't know how that reads well Denise. I think if a majority matches it, you're, you're in it. You don't, you don't get that out from my understanding of how it went down the first time. I mean, um, I'm not an expert in this, but it's a stretch of it, but I don't think. You know, even votes against it, they don't get to pull out of it. Because of. How statute dictates this based on account. It's, it's how I think it goes, but again, I would ask.
Question for Josh if, um, I can ask that on Thursday for you Denise.
Okay, and then, um, on page forty five, um, the villages ordinance. Um, I would, uh, I would like to see some changes made to this. Um, in the first whereas it talks about. Transients by hotel keepers, motel operators and other persons furnishing accommodations. That are available to the public. I think that we should specifically say short term rentals. As, um, we move forward with the short term rental ordinance or include VRBO Airbnb in there. I think, you know, only to the hotel keepers and the motel operators, they're not the ones who are, um. A problem, um, getting room tax from, and I guess I would just like to see specifically those. Um, those words added and in the, uh, second whereas and in the third whereas. I think desirous is an inappropriate word for an ordinance and if we approve this, I think. You know, it should state something more that we're willing or want to amend the current room tax ordinance. And then under section one, adoption of code amendment, it talks about that in the last sentence, the code of ordinance. Of the Village of Sister Bay. Well, it's the municipal code of ordinances. So I think that.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Um, Rob just asked me a question. Just, I wanted to clarify for everyone. At the last Tourism Zone Commission, when we were talking about this agreement and this ordinance. Um, the motions that have to come to the board and the ordinance, they can't be changed. They have to be consistent language across each municipality.
That, that's nice for them.
Yeah, this is the villages ordinance number two eighty four. This is what you wrote.
Well, no, this is the template that we received from them and that we filled in.
So if you don't like the wording, you have to vote no.
Okay.
And nobody else feels like it would be wise to ask for a sunset clause? It, I, I mean, if there's. If this is gonna work, it's so good as everybody thinks it is, they will be lined up to to assign to renew it, right? The only. You know, it's a protection. It's a layer of protection. So if it doesn't work, then people have to say, why didn't it work? How come it's not working as good as well? And then they gotta raise their case again. But if it's working good.
Uh, I, I, I can. I can explain to you my position on not agreeing with you. Having served on the tourism zone prior during my shift on the board and being back on it now briefly. I recall. And I can't speak to the individuals you're referencing directly, unnamed, and that's fine. But I vividly recall over my two plus years of involvement with the tourism zone. That there were two to three. Members who consistently objected to any tax increases, room tax increases. And they all happened to fall into the category of. Lower price point. Hotel motel bed and breakfast where. Their sentiment as they expressed it from their guests was. If the rates go up at all. I gotta look at booking somewhere else. If, if I had legitimate feedback or had heard from members of the zone over time, hey. I run one of the most vibrant rental properties. I have. You know, rate increases every year. And I'm against this. Then I'd say, hold on, there's something for us to take a look at. I personally have always felt, you know, I, I understand where those folks are coming from when they say, I just can't support something. Cause I don't want to lose any more business. The rates are getting too high. You know, it's the business we're in. You know, rates are gonna get higher. Taxes are gonna get higher. So. That's where I stand on that path and.
What, what about polling our citizens? For the inconvenience they have been and will continue to endure by bringing more people into their quaint little town? Have we had a survey to poll?
I, I would, I would say.
This or not.
I would.
Who's driving this? The people that benefit from getting more money are driving it. We can't get an opinion.
Denise? Denise?
I'm sorry, I lost my thought. I'm sorry, I lost my thought. I was listening to Pat.
I would just say.
The tourism zone is not, or Destination Door County is not the one who is driving it. It is the tourism zone. And the other thing that I was going to say, my thought was, is that Destination Door County has now changed. They no longer are necessarily a marketing entity. They are a destination, which means that some of the things that they do is going to shift. And it's, it's about sustainability and other things, not just constantly trying to bring more and more and more people here anymore.
They've switched to being managing the destination versus bringing more people to it. And I think the fundamental question here is, do we want the citizens and residents of Sister Bay to pay for some of this infrastructure that these, these visitors are using, or do we want them to pay for it? Because that's what it's going to come down to. We're going to have to come up with this money one way or another. And I think it should be from the people who are coming from outside of the community that should pay their fair share, or at least a little bit closer to their fair share.
Exactly.
Yeah, I agree with Nate's comments on that, and I, I do agree, Pat, that it is very important after this passes, assuming it passes, that the people that represent us in the tourism zone do a hell of a job representing us. And it's very important that we, as a village, start to decide, hey, we want to do this capital improvement to allow affordable housing. And we're going to go to the tourism zone and get that money. It's very important that there's follow-through by units, and I get it, it doesn't always happen. But there is a lot of good that can come with this money infrastructure-wise. And it can't come from anywhere else. I don't know where it's going to come from anywhere else.
We've already wiped that out. We've got all our roads. Namely a road you can drive down, other than the ones that have been done in the last twelve months, which is five percent.
I mean, it's.
We've already spent more than we've collected on non-road.
All this.
That's my whole point. This is supposed to be infrastructure, and yet we just find somewhere else to steal it and do something else. Affordable housing, that's nice and all, but you know, if your roads suck and you can't get to the beach because there isn't a grill or a table or a spot on the beach to use because they're all full of toys.
I agree when it comes to this. I'm going to be fighting for more of money. I know that's one thing I'm going to do when this comes to us. I'm not hung up on the number. I don't think it's nearly high enough for roads. Not even close.
And to Nate's point, and to your point about Pratt, Pat, if you, if you recollect back to when we, Sister Bay, were enacting Pratt, one of the justifications that the general consensus seemed to agree on was that what made Pratt not just feasible but necessary was that the room tax revenue coming in wasn't sufficient. And in particular, for our fellow communities that for whatever reason have not moved forward with Pratt on their own, they're feeling even more significantly that the room tax is not sufficient in itself.
The state won't allow them. You from us and Sister Bay are the only ones that were grandfathered in. And current administrations under the state won't allow any kind of property, any kind of tax. So it hinders Bailey's Harbor and Liberty Grove because of stupid government.
And that's so.
So we're lucky that we were grandfathered.
So what you're saying is.
I agree with what you're saying. I'm just giving a little more backstory of why they haven't adapted it. It's like he from Ken did, Sister Bay Ken did, we Ken did. That's all.
And the rest of the ones who have been at the tourism zone over the last two-plus years who can't participate in that have been the ones saying room tax isn't sufficient.
We have a parks district that, that has to do so much work for tourists. And it's either us as citizens raise our property taxes to keep cleaning up and taking care of tourists, or we find other avenues, and this avenue, Nate's point, makes the most sense for our taxpayers.
Okay, other than, we're going to get thirty percent of that, and the marketing arm is going to get seventy.
No, we still get it back for that seventy. We just gotta fight for it, and we gotta have proposals, and we have to follow through. It doesn't have to be used for marketing. To Denise's point, they're morphing, they're getting our feedback, and they know nobody likes how they're operating. We need to control them because the tourism zone dictates, they can fire Destination Door County tomorrow if they want. So it's important that our leaders follow through, and I'm going to have to have faith that they are. Because otherwise, if I didn't take a chance on anything, how would I be? No way. Just how it works. Can I, is it a slam dunk? No. But is it an opportunity? Yes.
Do we have another motion of any kind?
I'll make a motion that we adopt.
I'll second.
All those in favor of adoption, say aye.
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 A motion carries one nay. Duffy?
We have another one.
That was for the room tax ordinance.
That was for the ordinance. Now we need a motion for the resolution authorizing and approving the amendment, agreement amendment number three.
Now, did Vivian vote or did Vivian abstain?
She said she was abstaining. Cryerly said she was abstaining from all votes, so just count hers as an abstention to any other vote.
I'll make the motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement or whatever it is you're looking for.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried, one nay Duffy. Okay, skipping down to item number nine on the agenda, discussion regarding the recommendations from the Plan Commission that the Village Board passed and adopt Resolution Number four-six-four that approves the Platte for Orchard's Corner condominium that was submitted by James Solinsky on behalf of DC Adventure LLC for parcel number one-eight-one-four-two-four-zero-zero-zero-two, which property has been assigned an address of one-oh-five-nine-two State Highway fifty-seven, and also pass and adopt ordinance number two-eighty-three that authorizes the issuance of a conditional use permit that will allow the creation of a residential condominium on that property and approve the development agreement for Orchard's Corner condominium. Consider a motion for action if appropriate.
Yep, so this is a recommendation from Plan Commission. What you're seeing is everything coming from Plan Commission in one, in one agenda item. So what you're seeing is the approval of the conditional use as well as the approval of the plans and development agreements for Orchard's Corner condominium by James Solinsky. What this is, is a duplex and a single-family home on a condominium property. There were conditions in place, which is included in the development agreement. This is a B-one general business district, so that's why residential condominiums are a conditional use. If you have any questions, the Plan Commission Chair and the developer are on Zoom.
Do we have any questions for the Plan Commission Chair or the developer? Do we have a motion?
I so move.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all.
In particular, thank you for, I'd like to let the other trustees know who weren't part of the Plan Commission meetings, I'd like to commend you for your openness and willingness to work with the Plan Commission. It was much appreciated, and as a new member of that committee, it was a real bright learning experience and something that made me proud to be part of the committee, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Rob, can I say something else?
Yes.
I thought you were going to inform the board that the granary that sits on Mr. Solinsky's property is being moved to the Historical Society for Preservation, and he is paying for that move.
Awesome. Thanks again, Jim.
Sure, my pleasure. Thank you all.
Item number ten, discussion regarding the recommendation from the Plan Commission that the Village Board grant the request from Donald Cox and Emmeline Cox and pass and adopt Resolution Number four-six-three-zero-eight-one-seven-two-zero-two-one that approves the certified survey map CSM that splits parcel number one-eight-one-zero-zero-zero-eight-three-one-two-eight-two-two K, which has been assigned an address of one-oh-five-five-four Fieldcrest Road and parcel number one-eight-one-two-six-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-L-one into two separate buildable lots. Consider a motion for action if appropriate.
So this is another CSM request that's been recommended from Plan Commission to board for approval. What this is essentially is a CSM donating a chunk of the property from an existing R-one parcel to another R-one parcel to make it a buildable lot. Those properties are joined at the rear. There was a shed shown on the CSM. That shed is going to be removed, if not has already been removed. And this is to make two R-one residential lots. They both now meet the requirements. On the CSM was included for the review.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve by Kadako? Do we have a second?
I seconded it.
Oh, second by Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number eleven, review of the financial statements in consideration of a motion to approve the monthly bills. Any questions for Tasha? Do we have a motion to approve financial statements in the monthly bills?
I made that motion.
Motion by Bird also. Second by Kadako. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Item number twelve, discussion regarding and confirmation of the Village President's recommended citizen committee and commission appointments. I have none at this time. Item number thirteen, report by the Village Administrator on Village Activities and Projects.
Um, yeah, so I just want to begin by starting, we had talked about adding some layers to the GIS map. Now that Dan Klansky is Public Works Director is in place and getting a lay of the land, he and I both wanted to tackle adding some of those layers this year before budget season ends for twenty-one. We did start with adding the right-of-way layers. We're looking at adding a layer for signage because we know that there's a need to add signage in specific areas and keep updating to what's existing. Next thing that we're going to be looking into is zoning layers. That's exciting for me as a zoning administrator, and we'll be making that section available to the public to view once it's ready and including that on the website, just so that people can, you know, instead of having Realtors call me constantly in the morning, I can post on the website, hey, if you want to know what your property is zoned and what you can do on that, on that property, all the information's on this map. It's one click away. So that makes it easier from a staffing perspective. So I'm really excited to get that underway. I did include the Village Drive that Rob and I did go through. We did that on Wednesday, August fourth. We took a look at a few key components of the community and just some areas that we're working on right now. Some things included Pebble Beach and other village-owned property. We did see a few minor violations that were easily addressed, such as feather flags and some weeds. But the focus on that drive was on some future planning discussions and just brainstorming. So moving on to the next thing, the swim platform repair. For my last update on this, it's still out. Is it, is it put back in yet?
We're waiting for a call back.
Okay, okay, so just a brief rundown in case the community does ask, because I know I did update SBA. The chain broke off and it actually came to shore. Luckily, it didn't go to the middle of nowhere on the lake. So we were able to take it out and just figure out what went wrong there and repair that. And the ladder also was torn a little bit, so they need to replace the ladder, so they took that off.
We should have news. They called back. Hopefully, tomorrow or the next day, we'll know. We're repairing the ladder, and I will follow up.
Yeah, I would say we're just waiting for it to come back.
We were going to, I know we approved in the past, putting a second ladder on.
So I did talk to Dan Lundquist about that, and I believe it was the ladder, the ladder that they had for it wasn't going to fit. There was an issue just on the placement of it with the chain underneath it. I can ask him again and just see if there's another option or alternative, because I understand there's a need for a second ladder.
You know, it can be on a different side of it. Part of the thing is, you know, the kids, they've been on there, and they've got other kids coming up, and they can't get on, use the ladder, so if it was done.
My thought, yeah, my thought was side parallel to the other, just so that you have a spot to jump off of and you're not risking, you know, catching the ladder. I did, I will follow up with that, and I'll add that on the next report, or I will explain that at the Parks Committee. I can let you know individually as well. Road reconstruction update. We are undergoing a few road projects right now. Orchard Drive is milled up already. We're waiting for them to come in and finish up. This is a good sign. We want to see some more roads being repaired, so this is a great start. You'll see a couple other places like Country Lane that have some signage just marked and ready, and there's some markings on the road, so they'll be doing them one by one. I'm just getting those complete. So if you have any other questions, you can contact Dan or I for some clarification. And then lastly, just focusing on some other parts of the job, budget season's approaching. That does take a lot of Tasha and I's time. So that's going to be the focus for the next few weeks from administration standpoint, bringing those and preparing those with department heads. We do have two new department heads. They're taking to it well, so I'm really excited about this season and just getting this discussion underway. And then we come into the committee level shortly. So does anyone have any other questions for me? Denise?
Have, have you looked into the person selling wood illegally?
I've made a contact to the property owner, Jerry, and he should be resolving that shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Committee reports. Administrative Committee, nothing new to share at this time. Communication Technology.
We got a meeting Thursday?
Thursday.
Coastal Byways. DCEDC.
Oh, we went to a meeting on Monday. There wasn't actually a lot going on on there. We actually talked to Steve a bit after the meeting, and I know this will surprise you, Denise, but I've been pushing him on some zoning suggestions from there to help make affordable housing more attainable in the rest of the county. I know that doesn't apply to the village, but it would, it does impact the rest of the village, and does this, a rising tide floats all boats.
Excellent.
I gave him probably a little bit more of a nearful than he was ready for.
Okay, Ad hoc Emergency Management Plan Committee.
Has not met.
Finance. We're planning meetings for September, working at Tasha's, working on leading that charge. Fire Board slash Fire District Exploratory to first answer the question that came up at last month's board meeting about could those committees just simply be combined? The answer is no, and the reason is it, Fire District Exploratory Committee actually includes six villages and towns, and it has to remain a separate entity per Chief Heck, and he explained that in detail to us at the last Fire Board meeting. Denise?
That was not my question. I said that committee has not met in years, probably since Ken Church got off the board, and maybe even before that. I was asking whether or not it should be dissolved when we were dissolving economic development.
Yes, we also asked about the topic of whether or not it should continue then because it hasn't met, and it could meet at the future when the time would be necessary, and it's not a committee to be dissolved. It's the point of Chief Heck.
Okay.
Other note, news and notes on the Fire Board. Nancy Goss from Liberty Grove was officially elected as Fire Board Chair. Biannual Fire Department elections are coming for the clerk, the secretary treasurer, and and the chief positions. Chief Heck is unopposed. Just to give you a little insight into what June and July calls are looking like twenty-twenty-one versus two thousand nineteen. While fire calls are down ten percent, EMS calls are up twenty-one percent. The initial budget draft for the Fire Department was discussed. There'll be more discussion at the next meeting, which is September fourteenth. Pat, did you want to add anything else from Fire Board or? Okay. Ad hoc Friends of Pebble Beach Committee.
Going to meet in September.
Historical Society. Scott is not with us this season. Ad hoc Ice Ring Committee will be waiting to hear from Miles where they head next on that. Ad hoc Land Acquisition Committee.
I want to meet in September because I want you all there from the departments. What do you think night, doing in the evening better for the money?
Would it be possible for you as chair to send a selection of dates?
I'm only, I mean, I guess I would like to figure it out now, because you guys are the most important people for this next meeting. You know, I can't, I'm pretty flexible. I don't know if the village meeting is scheduled. You know, I can't, I'm pretty flexible. I don't know if the village meeting schedule is that. I'm usually good about picking a time that's inconvenient for the rest of the staff. So if we could do this right now, it would be great.
I could do an evening, I could do.
I want, I want the board there. I love staff that feels comfortable and wants to be there. This, I'm kind of taking it in steps about, okay, we, we want affordable housing out there. We knew. We, you know, there's an element of entertainment with the rent out there, but we know we need to. Have an administration building in parts of, the main reason we acquired that is to build. So I want as many village stakeholders. From a staff and board level to be there to hear your ideas.
I have four evenings that would work.
The whole month.
Monday, the thirteenth, Tuesday, the fourteenth, Wednesday, the fifteenth, or Monday, the twentieth.
I know I can't the thirteenth or the fourteenth or fifteenth, but thirteenth or when?
Thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, or twentieth?
Twenty, right now we tend to have a finance meeting. Three or four o'clock.
And then how long is that going to be going?
Yeah, probably done six thirty, probably, no?
Two and a half.
How does it, I was a, I was a thirteen, I was a thirteen.
Thirteenth works good for me. Parks is at two thirty, so if this is evening, that shouldn't be a problem.
Good Zoom, so you can be wherever you want to be.
What time do you want it at?
What do you think Parks is like six o'clock? Should you make it?
Sure.
Okay, six o'clock on the thirteen? All right. Oh, Janelle, you don't have to call me to say I picked the wrong time for a meeting.
Excellent, Jim.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jim. Library Commission, Vivian, anything?
Oh, um, they did meet. I want to say last week. I was not able to attend.
Sounds like the main thing is we're looking to find a replacement for Ralph as library chair.
Firement.
Right?
Yes.
We're replacing for Ralph strategically. Marina Committee, Pat?
Had a meeting. Numbers are on track. We are looking at various capital things that have been. Being worked on and planned, so just working through.
Marina Fest, Scott is not here.
I have a question on Marina.
Yes, Denise?
Pat, I see that the minutes are in here from August eleventh, so that was just last week. So you have no water softener? And is that still a problem a week later?
Well, we've never had a water softener, so considering for forty years we haven't had one, one week isn't going to kill it.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I was just, I guess, concerned that, you know, multiple attempts to contact the plumber who is not responding. I mean, I think that's just horrible.
Yeah, it's just.
So we're to the point where David started to seek out additional resources because if this guy doesn't do it, we're going to get somebody to do it. I asked the question of, hey, we would put in, we redone showers or whatever and I don't want to come to blinds and they assure me that once the water softener starts. It will clean things out that there isn't, I mean, yes, we'd want to get it done, but it isn't like, oh, my gosh, you know, without this, it's a huge deal temporarily. We are going to stay on it.
Okay, so and you haven't had a washer and dryer there for the season or these are just new ones to replace what you have?
No, we haven't had them for the season.
With the other work due to the water softener is. Or will be in its final resting place where the washer and dryers were. And so in order to. Allow the plumber the room for that, we had to move the washer and dryer and until that's finished, we can't put in the new one.
Okay, oh, so, so nobody's been able to wash their clothes at the Marina?
No, we, no big complaint.
Correct. We've been fortunate.
Okay.
Yeah.
People, people are generally, from what I hear from Dave, are pretty responsive with, we know this is temporary and we benefit from it. So we'll, you know, just move on.
Okay, and I have one more question for clarification. There was discussion on revisions to the reservation policy, including potential limits to the number of transient reservations allowed by. Any one customer. Can you clarify that for me?
So we have had some people who are taking advantage of our liberal. Reservation and can, more importantly, cancellation policy. So in other words, they might have consecutive reservations for a week at a time or two weeks at a time. With the thought of, I'm going to buy a boat, but now the boat isn't there or the weather doesn't look good for the next week or two. So the day before. They cancel the reservation, which gives us like no time to re-rent that slept. So.
Okay.
So to tighten up our reservation and cancellation policy. We're still ahead of budget. Revenue and not exceeding expenses. So our, the P and L looks good. You know, through the end of July and we have strong reservations in August and a little bit in September. So we're still okay, but. We've left a little money on the table because of some scammers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Parks Property and Streets. There was general consensus for future further discussion on the potential for memorial bricks to be purchased by folks that don't qualify for benches anymore. Perhaps a specific new pathway type area somewhere that is a discussion for down the road. We also had an initial presentation from our administrator and director of public works on potential for Highway fifty-seven sidewalks. Personnel Committee, Pat?
I don't think we have a meeting.
We're looking to meet.
Hold on, hey, Rob, Parks, I got a question on there. So fifty-seven is just looking at. Just sidewalks, not also dual use pedestrian cycling paths out there because that is a. Important corridor to get people into the village and out of the village.
The discussion included. That as well, but. Led to more focus on sidewalk issues and it was an initial discussion and. I would say watch for the next time the topic comes up on an agenda and please come to be a part of it. Plan Commission, Denise?
Does anybody have any questions on what we're doing? Okay, I would. The village has authorized the hiring of somebody to help us with the zoning code, Jeff Sanders, is it? Okay, and it was the recommendation of Jeff Sanders. That for some of the questions that we were asking, that we, he gave us a name of a zoning attorney. And so I know in the budget that we have. A certain dollar amount for legal advice, but I guess what I would ask is. For the village board to confirm that we can utilize this attorney. Under that line item budget for very specific questions as we're rewriting. And changing parts of the zoning code. I'm not proposing that we still don't use Randy, but for some very specific zoning things. I think we would like the opportunity to get this other person's legal opinion.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Might it make sense? I don't know how many questions you think you're going to have, but I only wonder is there a way to get a kind of a project? Cost as opposed to if you continue to call every time and he's going to bill you in time increments, that might be more expensive to say. You know, get an estimate from the first guy. How many questions or how much time you think legal advice we're going to need? Is there a way to? You know, come up with, hey, we need. Six hours of your time, twenty hours of your time and. If you're willing to get a project deal as opposed to.
I get.
You pick up the phone, it's thirty-eight dollars or seventy-six dollars or whatever the.
What's really happening here, Pat, is after every time we go through the code, those, those study sessions, we have a number of questions. They go to the attorney. And then we, we have feedback from that. So it's not like we can compile these questions all ahead of time. And hear what you're saying, but I don't think we know exactly what that is, but I mean, if, if we can get them on. On a better rate, of course we should. I just don't think we know how much we're going to need them. And of, of course, as, as everyone knows, spending money on attorneys upfront is a lot cheaper than spending it on the backend of it.
General consensus to move forward with that attorney, Denise?
I would have a motion.
No, you don't need a motion. It's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. SBA A discussed Chad's suggestion at the last Parks meeting that any individual. Or nonprofit group be allowed to fundraise in waterfront park during special events. SBA's general consensus was any individual fundraiser needs to go through a local nonprofit and jointly participate with that group. With the plan to be one fundraising nonprofit vendor with or without an individual joining along per concert. Food only, no beverages. Tourism Zone Commission meets on Thursday.
One second, yeah, I got a, I got a quick question for SBA and I, I tell Saul Luis is on here. I was, I'm just looking back to see exactly the date on it. It was last Thursday. I was crossing the street by Burdo's because I frequently go down and enjoy the waterfront park, lovely place. And I had, had the, 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 the trolley or the, whatever you want to call that, that. That lovely public transportation vehicle. Be careful with my words there. I was going in the crosswalk and as, as we're all very well aware, pedestrians have got the right of way into the crosswalk. That vehicle sped up when I stepped into the crosswalk. And I was very disappointed to see the logo of Sister Bay flying by me, not, not listening to, to state law. That was very disconcerting to me. I, I understand that we've got challenges getting that out there and I don't want to discourage from having that vehicle out there. But that was something that really didn't sit well with me, seeing our logo go by that way.
I'll rescind my bribe for the driver to get you made. Sorry.
That'd be sneakier than that, Chad.
I, I will take that to the next SBA A meeting as well, Nate.
Thanks, Rob.
Yep. Utilities meets in September. Unless it gets canceled for lack of agenda items.
Will not.
Youth Center has no new items to share at this time. Moving on, do we need a motion to accept all the committee reports from someone? Yes, we do.
Sure, I got a question utilities real quick. With the potential closure of that, are we still going to have two committees or are we just going to make it one?
Well, that won't resolve at least for the September meeting. And I think we'll have to see it all. I would say.
Through the calendar year, we're probably dealing with both of them. I would think.
Yeah, I would just be very careful. This is a public meeting at this point. I just. Let's just be careful about open meetings and things of that nature.
Okay, motion to accept committee reports. In detail? We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Agenda item fourteen, consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight, five, E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties. Investment of public funds or conduct other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And pursuant to Wisconsin nineteen point eight, five, C. To consider employment promotions, compensations or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Further defined as discussion regarding village owned properties related to E. And discussion regarding village employee performance evaluation data related to C. Motion to move into executive session. Second. Roll call.
Well, yes.
Yes.
Burdo, yes.
Kadanko, yes. Zaszkis, yes.
Duffy, yes.
Duffy, yes.
Duffy, yes.
Zaszkis, yes. There's one individual in the waiting room.
Burdo, yes. You know, yes.
Okay. We're back in. Okay, we're back in open session and we've, the public has joined us.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Paul, you ready?
Yep, for the sale of the property twenty-three ninety Ava Hope Court, the sale of fifty thousand dollars. With the stipulation of deed restrictions in place.
And I will second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. That's all we have. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, hey, guys, I thank you. I think every little move we make towards affordable housing will hopefully get these other villages doing something. And the million people who are stupid.